Well, good afternoon. Before we start, I'd like to see if you wish to join me in a moment of silence for the ones who are suffering during this week of Thanksgiving, ones who have lost loved ones in the wars, natural disasters, and sickness. Thank you very much, and good afternoon to you again. My name is Sina Najad. I have the honor of being the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission with my capable board members. We welcome you to the November 20th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, City of Beaumont. If you would, please call the roll.
Chairman Najad?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty is absent. Commissioner Jabar? Absent. Commissioner Jabea?
Here.
Commissioner Javed?
Here.
Commissioner Linton?
Here.
Commissioner Macon?
Here.
Commissioner Noyola?
Here.
Commissioner Senegar? Absent. Alternate Commissioner Harris? Absent. Alternate Commissioner Sorrell? Absent. Thank you.
Please let the record reflect that we have, we are joined by Mr. Pariji today, and we're really pleased that you have taken your time to be here and joining us. I wish for a nice, quiet meeting without you giving us any hard time. Thank you. This should be publicized. Is it televised? It should be, really. Okay. You have received the minutes of the previous meeting. I will entertain the motion. If there is any corrections or suggestions, we'll be happy to hear.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the previous minutes meeting, and we have a second. Any discussion in the matter? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're going to start a regular meeting. We only have one case, and that is PZ 2023-432. Good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. Homro of Whitley Infrastructure Group requests approval of a replat of lots 1 and 2 of the Christ Community subdivision into lots 1A and 2A of the Christ Community subdivision. The intent of the plat is to adjust a common lot line to increase real property for lot 2A. Staff does recommend approval of the request. We sent out 16 property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen, the area outlined in red is the area that we're reviewing. This is the plat. So on your screen, there's an original lot line that is to the north of lot 2A. Right now, it is going, it is increasing to be pushed up north a little bit further. I apologize, up to the east a little bit further. And that's just giving the lot 2A a little bit more real property. I do believe that we have the applicant in the audience.
Good afternoon, Mr. Rowe. How are you doing, sir?
I'm Rowe, Whitley Infrastructure Group, 655 Langham Road in Beaumont, Texas. For us who've been in Beaumont for a little bit, this is the old Kinsel property, if you remember, on 11th Street. Jimmy Johns is on lot 2, existing lot 2 today, and the owner of lot 2, Jimmy Johns, is needing some additional parking. It's all met code at the time, but after they got under operation the last several years, he needs some additional parking. So they're trying to clean this up a little bit. There's some potential, maybe some development on lot 1A coming, and the two owners needed to address this before any future development of that tract.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Any questions for the gentleman?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so, excuse me, we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant. I would entertain the motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We do have another case for the Planning Commission, and that is PZ 2023-410.
That doesn't have to be in the public hearing, Chairman, so we need to wait till we have a quorum of counsel.
Okay. It says Planning Commission here, and it says Planning Commission here too, so, all right, we'll wait. Let me pull it out. Well, great. Makes my lot much easier. This is the end of the Planning Commission meeting, and now we're going to start the joint meeting with the city council, and the honorable mayor will get us started.
Not quite.
We don't have a quorum.
It's not, we don't have a quorum, and it's not 3:15.
Okay.
Look at the council chairman.
You know, I complained about Pariji, and you're the one giving us a hard time.
He slipped me a 20 before the meeting started.
That's true. I did get into a lot of trouble one time. All right, so let's entertain ourselves until then.
All right, all right. See you, boss. How you doing? Yeah. 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 Kids will be out of school again. Doors will be full, traffic will be rolling. Oh, that popular 21st Street. I already see somebody. Yeah, he's the language supervisor for City of Beaumont. Yeah. 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 I don't even drink coffee. Isn't that funny? If I can't get it with a nap, it's just not going to get done. It's on. It's on. It's either gets or I don't want it. They usually, they usually come. Councilman gets his music here right now. Yeah, Councilman gets his music here right now, so. Okay, cover it. I said, I said, if they come any day, I never come. I said, I need to come. We weren't here, we'd be waiting on two members. Really wait, not always. I still, I still working. I pay my mortgage, I can't get kicked out of my own house. Yeah, it'd be the headline. Yeah. I can't see him yet. What are you doing? Who shots? Uh, Zach took Laura to her newborn screening because she wasn't feeling good, but I was in the car, and he thinks mine is like, they had to take blood over because of her jaundice. He's like, do you need me to come? And I was like, no, we've got this. You do, you do have it. She was like three days old, and he's like, okay. But he did good. That's apparently the nurse whenever they went in there, they were like, oh, are we waiting on mom? Is she in the bathroom? He's like, nope, she's in the car taking a nap. I got this. Yeah. 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 Yeah, you're right. Yeah. 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 Mr. Beatty?
Yeah. 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 Good afternoon again, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to get started with a joint meeting of the Planning and Zoning and the City of Beaumont City Council. Mayor West, please.
Mayor West?
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Felschall?
Present.
Councilmember Durio? Absent. Councilmember Neeld? Absent. Councilmember Gatz?
Present.
Councilmember Samuel? Absent. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here today. The only people who can speak on the House is today. The planning committee will make recommendations to the city council. The House today will come before the city council in two to three weeks for a decision. We do not. There will be, there will not be a public hearing on the House of the city council. Again, this is the only public hearing we have today. Certainly, thank everybody.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to get started with PZ 2023-410, please.
All right. Hussein Datahoy requests a specific use permit to allow a scrap recycling collection center at 565 Orange Avenue. Operations of this facility will include collection, purchase, and shipment of scrap metal and other recyclable materials from both public and industrial sources, and offer fair market prices to encourage individuals and businesses to participate in recycling efforts. The site will consist of concrete pathways within the yard, construct a storage building, and include a small office space for administration. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. Number three, shall install an eight-foot wood masonry or metal fence around the perimeter of the property if materials are stored outside of a building. Number four, storage of any kind shall not encroach onto any public right-of-way. And number five, shall adhere to all state statutes, local ordinances, and required licensing for a metal recycling entity. Staff sent out 18 property owner notices, and we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is the area with aerial photography. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. Right now, it's vacant. Property northeast. To the northwest. West. And south. I do believe that we have the applicant and the owner present.
Any questions for the lady? Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
If you would, please state your name and address and any additional information you'd like to give us in your case.
My name is Hussein Datahoy, and my address is 607 Press Street, Houston, Texas, 77020. And this project over here is a recycling collection facility that we are proposing to place here. It is a facility to collect scrap from the public and industrial places around here in Beaumont. And it acts, it's a small property. It acts like a transfer station. We, the collector were here, and then we transferred out to our processing facility in Port Arthur, where the scrap is then further processed and shipped out. We have a facility that we opened up in Orange earlier this year. This is going to be very similar to that one.
And how many people you're going to employ?
Employ about eight to 12 people.
Okay. Is there any machinery that would cause any excessive noise to the neighborhood? Or do you know?
Nothing. There are small industrial machineries, like a material handler, forklifts of those sort. There's no heavy noise pollution created from any of those machineries. And also, our hours are daylight hours, so we open at 8:00 and we close at 5:00. There's no weekends, so half-day on Saturdays.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman?
Do you, have you already purchased the property? Or is it, you've purchased it?
We already have purchased the property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. In the recycling part, are you crushing this material? Because you said you're going to process it.
You're right. So at this location, we only collect, and we put them in boxes, and then we transfer them out to the Port Arthur Processing Facility, and we crush, bail, or torch, depending on, you know, what is needed. Not here.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Good luck. We now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? No comments from the public. We close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant, and I would entertain the motion.
So move with five conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to PZ 2023-411.
The Port of Beaumont requests a rezone of 1200 Park Street to be zoned from light industrial to port development. The port intends to develop the site to accommodate truck queuing, cargo storage, and workforce development to increase efficiency and operations and growing infrastructure needs of the port. This request aligns with the interlocal agreement between the port and the city executed in January of 2023. Staff recommends approval of the request. We sent 32 property owner notices and received zero in favor. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is the subject property. To the north. North and northeast. West. To the south. And I do believe that we have the applicant and owners present.
Thank you, ma'am. Please let the record reflect that I would recuse myself from participating, and we do some work for the city, for the Port of Beaumont. For that reason, I do not, I will not participate in this.
Okay, yes, the applicant, if you'll please come forward and give us your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Shawde Chik, 2125 East Nevada Street, Beaumont, Texas, and I'm here on behalf of the Port of Beaumont. And as noted, 1200 Park is zoned light industrial, and we are requesting rezoning to Port Development District per interlocal agreement signed in 2023, January 2023. And this property is currently owned by the Port of Beaumont. There will be a truck queuing area on-site, as well as, we are hopeful, a workforce development and training center specific to the transportation industry in the next several years.
A question. There was a building in this.
Yes.
Is that to be removed? Or?
That will be the Workforce Development and Training Center.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone? Public hearing's now closed. Is there a discussion or a motion?
I'll move to accept PZ 2023-411. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Same thing on the next. PZ 2023-412.
Port of Beaumont requests to rezone a 2.76 acre portion of land located at 412 Emmett Avenue, 1353 to 1399 Park Street, and properties just north and east of 1353 Park Street, from commercial manufacturing to port development. Again, the port intends to develop the site to accommodate truck queuing, cargo storage, workforce development. That's to increase the efficiency of operations and growing infrastructure needs of the port. This request does align with our interlocal agreement that was executed in January of 2023. As such, staff recommends approval. We sent 38 property owner notices, received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen is the area under review, outlined in red. This is the subject property. Property to the north. North continued. East. That's Pipkin Park. And to the south. We do have the applicant and owner here.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant in the audience? Yes, ma'am, if you'll give us your name and address again, please.
Shawde Chik, 2125 East Nevada Street, Beaumont, Texas. And this property is also currently owned by the Port of Beaumont. It is an operational truck queuing area, so we will continue to use it for that purpose, to remove those trucks from city streets that would otherwise be staging in other areas. This is a designated area for Port of Beaumont trucks, or trucks calling on the Port of Beaumont.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
You're welcome.
The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone? Public hearing is now closed. Have a motion or a discussion?
Move to approve.
We've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, PZ 2023-431.
Herr King requests approval of a specific use permit to allow John Deere Equipment Dealership and Repair Shop to be located at 3265 East Tex Freeway. The existing building has been used as an automotive collision and body shop for some time. Planning and zoning relies on Section 28.03.023 permitted uses of the city's Code of Ordnances to determine where land uses are permitted, conditionally permitted or not permitted in certain zoning districts. The categorization of businesses derives from the Standard Industrial Classification Manual, also called SIC, which is published by the Executive Office of the President Offices of Management and Budget. Strict compliance of the ordinances does require a successful SUP for a heavy equipment dealership to operate within the GCMD zoning district, which is why this case is brought before you. The proposed use appears to be compatible, to be a compatible use in respect to surrounding land uses, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. Number three, equipment shall not be displayed within any easements or right-of-ways. Number four, shall install a six-foot wide landscaping buffer between East Tex Freeway and the parking lot in accordance to Section 28.04.006 landscaping requirements. All parts of the landscaping must be installed on private property and not to encroach in text dots right-of-way. We did send five property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is an aerial picture of that area under review. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. Subject and north. Subject and west. And south. And I believe we have the applicant present.
Any questions for the lady?
Yeah, quick question. On the picture you showed, the front of the place. And in the requirements, you said six-foot wide landscaping. So that's, is it six foot tall or six foot wide?
It would be six foot wide.
Okay. And, but presently, it doesn't have that?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. And applicant, good afternoon. Very well, thank you, ma'am. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jennifer King, 1335 Britmore, Houston, Texas, 77043.
Yes, ma'am. You have any additional information that you would like to pass on to us?
Doggett has recently bought the console dealerships, and so they currently are renting a facility off Cardinal. And they want to bring all of their, their heavy equipment over to the Collision Center, which they'll be doing the same work that they're doing right now at the Collision Center, except that will be heavy equipment versus vehicle.
Any questions for the lady? Thank you.
Thank you.
We now open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the applicant and also the staff. There is the case, it has four comments on it, and with that, I would ask for a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve, file PZ 2023-431 with the four conditions.
Check it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck, folks. Next segment, PZ 2023437.
Legacy Christian Academy, located at 8200 Highway 105, requests an approval of an amended SUP to allow a new classroom to be built, or I'm sorry, new classroom building to be constructed. The new building will be 9,300 square feet in size and contain eight classrooms, two bathrooms, and one teacher workroom. It is intended to serve junior high students for normal classroom activities. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirement of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. Staff did send 92 property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is the area under review. It's bordered by the Deerfield subdivision and Windermere subdivision. This is an aerial photography of the site. This is the site plan. Subject property. The, the building that's lower than the green roof, that is the building that is going to be reconstructed. This is properties to the west. It's the entire Deerfield subdivision. Properties to the east is a DD6 ditch and Windermere subdivision. To the south, also residential single-family homes. And to the south, continued. And I believe we have the applicant present.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? The applicant in the audience. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
If you would state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear any more comments you have.
Sure, Chris Levens, 550 Fannin, Suite 400, Beaumont, Texas. As staff said, this is just expanding the facility. We're going to demolish and hopefully take down the existing buildings that are there for classrooms and then put this building back in its place. It is going to be larger, but that's a good thing. We can house more students.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman? Simple. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? That's great. We sent 92 notices and nobody's unhappy. Good record. Thank you very much. We're going to close the public hearing, and I entertain the motion.
Move for approval with two conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next case is PZ 2023441. I would recuse myself from this case. My property is within 200 feet of the question building.
Thank you. Okay, PZ 2023441, staff?
Hillary Dishman of The Floor Shop is requesting a rezone with a specific use permit to allow a floor covering business at 505 25th Street. The business operations will include sale of interior, interior design, furniture, flooring, bedding, and more. The subject property is located at the western corner of 25th Street and Calder Avenue, and is to be rezoned from RS2 General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling 2 District. Commercially zoned property exists in this area along the south side of Calder and the intersection of West Lucas and Calder. However, the numbered streets of 19th through 25th Street, including Thomas and Circuit Roads, are residentially zoned on both sides of the street and should remain so. Any change to this pattern may allow for similar encroachments into residential areas along the mentioned streets. In addition, regarding the request of the SUP, one of the requirements to approve any SUP is that the proposed use must meet the following minimum requirements, that the use will be compatible and not interest to the use enjoyment of other property or significantly diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity. In examining this use, while the, while the use might be consistent with nearby commercial uses along Calder, a major arterial street, allowing a new business to encroach within the single-family neighborhood close to established homes could be contrary to the requirement listed above. Lastly, it should be noted that a 15-minute city is an emerging trend for city planning. A 15-minute city is an urban planning concept which mostly, which most daily necessities and services such as workshopping, education, healthcare, leisure, can be easily reached within a 15-minute walk, bike ride, or public transit ride from any point in the city. While rezoning may be advocated in other parts of the city to accommodate this concept, the, this particular area is already established as such. Therefore, the request to rezone 505 25th Street may encourage infiltration of commercial uses into an established, single-family neighborhood when it may not be necessary. Staff recommends denial of this request. If commission or council chooses to approve this case, staff would recommend the following conditions with that. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city backflow, backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, no pertinent structures or appurtenances shall, shall be placed within the easement, alleyway, or right-of-way property. Number three, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building codes. Number four, construction plans shall be in compliance with Section 28.04.006 landscape and screening requirements. Number five, all lighting installed must be directional and shielded from all properties, or residential properties to the north, northeast, and east. Number six, all businesses shall be in compliance with Section 28.04.007 performance standards. We did send out 24 property owner notices. We received three in favor, one of them being the applicant, and zero in opposition. On your screen is the area outlined, red is under review. This is an aerial photograph of it. Surrounding to the east is the residential areas. To the west and south is the commercial uses. This is the subject property. This is immediately to the north. This is to the north, trying to capture the residential homes that are along that street. To the east. To the west. And to the south. And then further south. I do believe that we have the applicant present.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay. If the applicant's in the audience, if you'll please come forward and give us your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Brian Shook, 4215 Calder Avenue.
Your address, sir? Oh, you gave it to me, I'm sorry. Do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
I just wanted to, so if we abide by all the zoning, I know it was denied, but it said if we abide by all the utilities and water, is there still a chance we could have this business still or no?
Just for clarification, staff is recommending denial. The commission hasn't made a recommendation yet.
I'm not familiar how this works.
That's okay.
I will say, just further noted, there would be no added traffic down 25th Street. We would access the business off of Calder Avenue.
Okay. I have a question. Have you already purchased this home that you're looking at to move to?
We have, they have accepted our offer, but it's contingent upon this being approved or denied.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
Any questions of the applicant?
Is this going to be a showroom or a, what type of facility? Because you're going to tear the existing home down? Are you using it?
No, sir, we would use the home. It would still currently look like if you were to turn down 25th Street, if you will, we would keep the residential look to the house. There may be an employee that parks off 25th. But inside, it would be a small showroom.
What about storage?
We wouldn't. We have a existing business across the street. We have a warehouse as well as dumpsters.
Okay, because I was looking at your design. And according to the design I was looking at, I'm not sure if the driveway is facing 25th Street or Calder.
Right, so the current driveway now is on 25th Street, and there is an existing drive off of Calder that is fenced off. So other than one or two employees off of 25th Street, every customer would come off of Calder Avenue for the parking.
So you redesigning it for parking on Calder?
It, it has a driveway off of Calder that we would, you know, maybe the site plan, I could, I could go over it. So that's the current driveway that the former residents were using off of 25th Street, where we would have an employee. And is there another picture potentially that would show Calder? There was a drive that is currently fenced off, but we would access 25th Street far as customers go. Yeah, you can't, yes, this one. I don't know if I can show y'all, show you this.
Well, I'm, I'm looking.
Having it in their pocket.
Yeah, I have one, looking at it.
Okay, yeah, so where it says, existing driveway to remain. That is the old driveway coming off of Calder Avenue that we would use for any customers to come in. And your parking lot would be right there.
And, and I think.
Right now, it's just a backyard.
It's just a backyard, but there's not, no, no storage building going in there later.
No, sir. There is a storage building there that we would currently take off the property.
Okay, because the only thing that was looking at was that it's a complete residential neighborhood, and that, that's the only thing that you're trying to convert to commercial.
Sure.
Okay, that, that's my questions.
Thanks.
Where would deliveries be made? Would, would be, would deliveries be made off the Calder entrance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rugs and?
Yeah, any, any, any kind of customers would come off of Calder. The only, the only, anybody that we would have would be an employee that would park off 25th Street.
How many employees do you plan to have at this location?
Two.
Two. And what are your hours?
It'll be nine to five.
Okay, so it's, the existing driveway would have the two employees, but you're still going to have room for people to come in and look?
Not off of 25th.
I wasn't going to come up here, but I'm Hillary Dishman. I own The Floor Shop. This is my husband. And I was a little nervous to speak, so I was like, can you speak for me? And then, and then he didn't know some answers, so I'm like, in the back.
Okay.
Here she is.
So Hillary, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, so our parking lot, where all of the traffic will be, will be off Calder. And the, like, the fence that is right there that borders the Parigi property will be removed. So if you're at the Lucas and Calder Light, turning left on the Calder, you'll see basically the front of our building, which will look like his shopping center L's around almost.
Which is a real busy section anyway, right?
Right, right. But we, I mean, we'll have minimal traffic, and then our, we have plenty of parking across the street. So overflow will be directed to the Floor Shop across the street.
We would have signs that say any additional parking needed would be at the Floor Shop across the street.
And then they would walk across Calder? Oops.
We walk to K2 Cafe.
I mean, it's, it's a very small showroom. I don't think we'll have much volume.
I mainly appointment only for all my design work, so that's kind of what I'm anticipating for this location.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Please come forward and give us your name and address. Yes, sir.
My name is Sam Parigi, and I'm at 445 North Forte Street here in Beaumont. I am here on behalf of my family, who, not my immediate family, my cousins, who own the property. Linda Saccatano was daddy, was Anthony Parigi, who was my great-grandfather, I mean, my great-grand, my grandfather's brother. And so I was involved with the center when we built it and acquiring that piece of property. In fact, we were talking about putting a cell tower on it many, even a years ago. And we, my uncle didn't want to do it. So I'm here only for that reas, I'm here for that reason. We see no problem with it. They do, we're going to take the fence down. It will be that. I was sitting behind me with some neighbors who have some concerns. I totally understand the concerns. I'm not here to argue. If you turn it down, it's not like, you know, I know where all of y'all live and, and, you know, you'll see Guido tomorrow or something like that. You know, we, we understand, and, you know, it's up to what y'all think is right. I don't have a problem with it because I really do think that these people have done a great job with the building across the street. They even outclassed Mr. Nishad's building, which is across the street also. So I just want y'all to know that I think these people have, they, they need space. I'm in the real estate business, and the problem's going to be is for people to get started in small businesses. It's hard to go out, you got to go out and rent something at a shopping center, and you're going to rent something from the Feelings or the Pariges or the whoever, and it isn't cheap. And this is probably a pretty inexpensive way to try this out and see if it'll work. They have a warehouse somewhere else. They're not going to be bringing in rolls of carpet or anything like that, only because I helped them with the warehouse. We talked about a warehouse and stuff like that. So give it a chance. It, that whole area might turn into a nice little shopping district with houses and stuff like that, little shops. But if you turn it down, I totally understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Terry Denson, I own the property at 525 24th Street. I'm against the specific permit, just like the lady described in the, in the information packet, that I think that once you give them a specific use permit, that you're opening a door. It's a residential neighborhood. It's been residential since its inception. And once you open that door, there's no reason for you not to see someone else ask for a specific use permit. And it will go on and on and on. So I'm against giving them a specific use permit.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone else? Since you had some negative responses, you have an opportunity to come up and address those. Ms. Parigi, I'm sorry. Not Mr. Parigi. Dishman, I'm sorry.
My view on that is we're, I currently have a business. It's residential behind us, and, and we really don't have any problems. And we helped our neighbors during Imelda, you know, if they had any issues. We, we removed all their carpet free of charge, and we're, we're good neighbors. I mean, that's about it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Brenda Denson. Same property owner, 525 24th Street. The concerns are traffic. And big concern, it's always been a residential neighborhood, and we believe that it should remain so. If you start carving out sections that can be zoned commercial, then you're just going to keep carving out, and then you're. out sections that can be zoned commercial, then you're just gonna keep carving out and then you, it's not gonna be residential anymore. Then where will those families go? I see both sides. I really do, but really concerned about the residential part and the traffic part. I understand that they wanna keep their parking mainly on um Calder, but that's, you can't control traffic, not really. They'll, the people that are interested in that will come down 25th, 24th. You have families living there. You have families with children living there and that's always a concern because children play in the streets, whether we want them to or not. So that's my concern.
Thank you. Okay, does the applicant have anything else you wish to say regarding that? No? Okay, uh, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a discussion or a motion?
I move that we deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to deny and a second. All in favor of denying PZ 2023 dash 441, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Okay, the motion is denied.
Mr. Parigi, next time you show up, you need to give us a written description of what you're gonna say for the attorney to approve. We're gonna go to PZ. He does know where I live. That's the bad part. PZ 2023 443.
Jesse Bob requests a rezone of 2055 South Street to be rezoned from residential multifamily highest density to heavy industrial or a more restrictive zoning district. Mr. Bob intends to use the site to park cars and extension of his building or his business located across the street at 2030 South Street. It should be noted, records show Mr. Bob's business to have multiple violations over the past 10 years for junk motor vehicles and storage of cars within the public right of way. The heavy industrial zoning district was established in this area to reflect the existing industrial uses east of 4th Street and for a limited extent of west of 4th. The zoning map clearly shows where the line of demarcation has held for decades, allowing the old uses but protecting the adjacent neighborhood. Any change to this pattern could encourage further erosion of the neighborhood to the west. As such, staff recommends denial of this request. Staff was sent, or staff sent 20 property owner notices and received zero in favor and zero in opposition to this case. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is the subject property. So he's fenced it off that, that area. To the north. To the east. To the west. And to the south. And I do believe that we have the applicant and the owner in the audience.
Yeah, I have a question. So the property in question has already been fenced off?
It has. It has. So in this case, um, in this case, you can put up a fence, um, if you would like on your property, if you own it. Um, however, this appears to be larger or taller than six feet, which would require a fence permit, so we'll have to have someone go out and inspect.
Okay, thank you.
The fence was put up without a permit?
Yes, because it's larger than, uh, or greater or taller than six feet. If it's under that, um, then that no permit is required.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff?
Yes, question, uh, trying to find out the, I'm assuming that he has the property across the street and he's owns this property also?
Yes, his property is right there. Um, so there's the fence that's going there and then further, um, you'll see where the cars are parked.
And looking at the uh view, next to the lot in question, there is a residence. Is there someone living there?
Yes.
And how many residents do you actually have in that block? Uh, cause I'm looking at, most of it is being used as industrial and half of it is residential and some of them are, look like they're already abandoned.
So looking at this zoning map, um, the area outlined in red obviously is the one that's under review. Um, to the west is high industrial. That's the one that fronts 4th Street right there. Um, moving further to the east is residential multifamily and that's where all of the existing neighborhood is, um, going into the historic district that way. So it, it's, in short, it's somewhat split on that block. And the area that uh Mr. Bob's uh existing um business is at is to the north, um, to the northeast.
Okay. No questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you today?
Barbara Wilson, 2441 Liberty Street, and I'm gonna speak in behalf of Jesse Bob. He's uh owned the JB Automotive's right across the street for the past 38 years. He has had several problems with uh parking, mainly because the customers come and drop their vehicles off and just leave them in the street. So he's received several violations for cars on the street. So he purchased that uh property to try to help with the, you know, the parking, the overflow of parking, so that he'd have somewhere else to, you know, just to put cars. Um, he's near retirement age, so after that point, you know, we can, he'll release the property probably to be used for a residential again at a later purpose, but later time. But right now, that's really what he wanted it for was to relieve some of the, you know, problems he's having with people leaving the cars on the street in front of that building. So, and he's been there 38 years. That's it.
Hold on.
Any questions?
So the pro- the, the lot in question is going to be used for overflow?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No more questions.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. We're gonna open the floor for public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the representative of the owner. Uh, and I would entertain the motion.
I'm moving to deny.
Second.
We have a motion to deny and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're gonna go to PZ 2023 444.
The Hope Women's Resources Clinic requests approval for a rezone from neighborhood commercial to GCMD two and a specific use permit to allow a boarding house for the property located at 3875 Laurel Street. The building will have five bedrooms and two bathrooms, one common area and one utility room for all residents to share. They intend to offer temporary housing for women who are unemployed, dependent on a spouse or family, family member, or unable to financially support themselves and children. This will give women and their children time to find a long-term solution to housing, food, and income. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Number two, no permanent structures or appurtenances shall be placed within the easement property. Number three, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building, engineering, and fire codes. Staff sent 15 property owner notices and we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is an aerial photograph of the property. This is the site plan. Um, everything's going to be an interior remodel. This is the subject property. Property to the north. To the west. To the east and south. And we do have the owner and the applicant present.
Good afternoon. Blake Laughlin, 5565 Keith Road, Lumberton, Texas, here on behalf of Hope Women's Clinic in Beaumont, 3875 Laurel Street. The building's just roughly, is just gonna serve the community. It's gonna be a vacant building that's gonna be able to pe- to be used to house, um, I guess, families that are having trouble getting started and it's going to improve the community by giving them housing and, and, and um having these families attend the Hope Clinic across the street to be able to help build the uh, the connection they have with their family and improve their parenthood. So it's all a short period of time, so it's all short-term living solutions to help these families get a, I guess, a leg up. There's no long-term living. I would say in the range of months at a time, weeks to months. Correct. Yeah, so there will be, the property will be fenced. We plan on putting a privacy fence along the back and corner of the fence and then we're gonna run a short fence across the front of the property on Laurel Street.
About the women in the room, sorry. Uh, my name's Jeanette Harvey. I'm the executive director at the Hope Clinic and um, oh, I'm sorry, um, my, my home address? Any address? 3740 Laurel in Beaumont. Uh, we plan to allow women to stay up to two years because the housing authority waiting list is two years long. If it becomes shorter, then the women wouldn't need to stay there. It will only be women and children. There will, there won't be any men there and there's nothing for women in the city of Beaumont right now, and so we're trying to provide that need. Five, five is the limit with children, yes.
Yes, I have one question. Uh, we do have another uh family services, uh, just for women and children. What, what's the difference that you guys wanna do?
My understanding is that's for women in abusive situations and they are maxed out. We, we partner with them and we send women there when we can. This is just for women who have found themselves uh without housing and it, for various reasons. Uh, we, we at the Hope Clinic serve women who find themselves pregnant and what we're finding is who, whomever they're living with has told them, you can't live here anymore if you have this baby. So we're trying to provide them some kind of transitional housing until the housing authority can get them into that housing. And the housing authority is, is a fan of ours, so they're hoping to work to make that happen quicker than the two years.
Are you gonna be focusing on uh homeless females in the area?
Yes.
What about the, if they're, have drug addiction?
Um, no, there's already places for those women as well as women in abusive situations. We're gonna be focused on those women who don't fall into those two categories because there really isn't a place for them.
How do you locate these women that you're talking about?
They come to us, believe it or not. We provide medical services and material and educational resources for women who are pregnant, um, until their babies turn one. And so they come to us and they tell us their greatest need is housing and that's what kind of started this whole process for us.
So the criteria is women who are either pregnant or just have recently had a baby? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the age limit for the child is?
10, I believe. I, I don't have that information right here, but we have done some research in what is legally allowed with multiple families in one thing, and I think the age is 10.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We will have one person. They will have their own little apartment at one end that will be there all the time. Um, not for babysitting, but mainly just to make sure that all the needs are being met and the people are living, um, as they're supposed to. That's a good question. We haven't writ- written all those policies yet.
So boarding house includes kitchen?
Yes, commercial kitchen.
Someone's cooking or?
It'll include a commercial kitchen. Um, we'll have some volunteers that come in to do that cooking. There'll also be opportunities for the uh, the residents to do their own cooking for themselves, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon again. Still live at the same place, 445 North 14th Street. I've been in, I have kind of on the outside looking in, been involved with this Hope Center. They were my neighbor when we owned Laurel Square right next door. 3720 Laurel, we had 21 townhouses. They were great neighbors. They have done a great job with that piece of property. They were, they either bought it or were giving it to them by the OBGYN clinic that was there many, many years ago. And they ha- they are serving the community a real purpose. And unfortunately, it's not, this is not the best fit for what they're trying to do. But this piece of property was given to them and for right now, it's the best fit that they have. Surely, I was at a fundraiser Tuesday night, I believe, yeah, last week, Tuesday night? And it's amazing. They raised a bunch of money in a short period of time and it's all going to help these families, these, these young ladies that are at the end of their rope. They don't know what to do with, they're pregnant and they don't know what to do. And they could get an abortion and I'm not here to talk about that, but they could get an abortion. But these people try to help them out and say there is another way. And some of them need places to live and someone gave them this piece of property. It's, like I said, it's not the best, but for right now, it's the best they got. And uh, I, you know, I was concerned about the fencing. In fact, I motioned to Mike Getz, I said, ask about the fence and you asked about the fence. And I was concerned about that because that worries me a little bit also. Cause even though we don't talk about husbands or fathers of these soon-to-be children or whatever, I worry about that. And, cause sometimes they get a little irate. So I, I think it's a, I think it's a good for the neighborhood, and not necessarily for the neighborhood. I think it's good for the community. And I'd like to see, I'd love for somebody to have enough money and buy Laurel Square and they would've had 21 townhouses they could've put these people in. But I don't think they had that kind of money at the time. So thank you for listening to an old man talk about the city of Beaumont, what its needs are.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We closed the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the uh, the owners and we do have the case in front of us with uh, uh, three conditions, so I would entertain the motion.
Motion to approve, PZ 2023 dash 444 with the three conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. We go to PZ 2023 445.
The Hope Women's Resources Clinic requests approval of an amended SUP to add approximately 1,200 square feet onto the north side of their main building located at 3740 Laurel Street. The operations of the clinic have outgrown the existing facility, therefore expansion of the building will allow the clinic to offer more services to small groups at a time. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans meet, must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans must comply with all applicable building and fire codes. Staff did send out 33 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is an aerial photograph of the property. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. To the north. To the east. To the west. And to the south. And that's Hall and Drive back there. We do have the applicant present.
So if you'd be kind enough, state your name and address for the record again.
Jeanette Harvey, 3740 Laurel. They elected me to come back up here.
Mrs. Harvey, you're doing a great job.
Okay, thanks. I, I just wanna add that the reason we need to build on is because we have increased our services so much. This year alone, we've had over 4,000 women and men come through our program and we need to provide more medical services and then additional parenting and material resources. And that building in the back that we already have, we just wanna build an extension on to be able to provide. Right now, we provide classes one day a week and shopping one day a week and we would be able to do that four or five days a week.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Parigi, you wanna say anything else?
No, but I think it's the same thing.
Fantastic, great. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant. It's a great cause and I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With two conditions.
We have a motion to approve with two conditions and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you very much. Honorable mayor will send us home.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.